All right, before we start, Daisy, could residents get it online?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that's my new ask every time.
Yes, we're good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, A.J. So this time, please silence your cell phone. Be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. Go ahead and call this meeting to order Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be given by Pastor Leroy Rodriguez from New City Church. Is he here?
Yes.
Pastor? And then the pledge of allegiance will be by the mayor pro tempore. Please stand.
Time of prayer and going before the Lord Jesus Christ. Gracious God, Lord Jesus, we come before you today seeking your guidance and wisdom for the members of the Grand Terrace City Council, the mayor, and every council member. As we deliberate on matters that affect our city, our homes, and our lives, we ask that you illuminate their path with the light and fill hearts with compassion and justice. Lord, we give you now, every member of the council, and we ask, Lord, that you will direct them, you will give them wisdom and knowledge for every decision that is made. We submit to you, heavenly Father, and we thank you for this great honor and opportunity to guide the city of Grand Terrace. We thank you now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We all honor our great country. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, pastor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tempore. M.C., clerk, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tempore Sabino?
Present.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So reordering, additional, removing any items? Do we have any removal or reordering?
None, Mayor.
Council, do you have any recommendations? No? All right, item B, public comment. This opportunity for members of the public to comment any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restrictions. Containing California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item on the agenda, not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff if questions arise during the public comment or may request the matter to be agendas for future meetings. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening. I'm Jason Greeley. How are you? Good to see you. Listen, I'm here to talk about the 41st Annual Anpeda Art Show. We have flyers here. They're available, and we're still looking for artists and submissions. So I'm really excited about this art show. It's coming up May 3rd, and the submissions go till the last week. We're getting a lot of them in, but I still have room. So I wanted to let you guys know that. And speaking of flyers, I'm also here on request of the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Tomorrow is Coffee Connection at Woody's at 8:00 a.m. And if you have a business in town, or if you have an organization or anything that you wanted to put flyers on our table there, you're more than welcome. That's all I wanted to say. I wanted to keep you guys in the loop and stay in the loop myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason. I'm sure Councilmember Wilson will be entering. He always, he's our artist here.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll go ahead and close, close public comment. And I guess, I thought all the officers were here today for me to, for protection, but I guess not. So I guess we're here for Brian. You look different out of uniform.
Different.
No. I mean, you don't look stressed. You look relaxed. You want some grandkids? I'll let you have them. You know, I know, I'm going back to work at the prison so I can relax, you know. Anyway, we're going to have a special presentation. I see the order, but I want to do it a little, I'm going to let Scott Ward come up first, and communications director of San Bernardino County, the board supervisor. And Brian can, I don't know, well, Scott's going to read you something. And let me first introduce Brian. And who's, and your wife's? She's the one that held you together, right?
Absolutely.
She's the one that told you to go to work?
Yeah, yeah, told me I could come home.
Okay.
Take the trash out.
All right. That's what they do. But, you know, you couldn't do without her, right? Okay.
Lieutenant Lane, good to see you again.
Good morning, sir.
I too did not recognize you. Between, between you and Conrad, you look totally different, too. I'm just, I don't know, where am I right now?
I know.
Now, clearly, I am in Grand Terrace because we are honoring this gentleman who put in, if my math is right, nearly 30 years with Sheriff's Department between a wide variety of assignments. When I found out you had worked in Twin Peaks and Big Bear in addition to your time with Central Station, that's almost all of the 3rd district. I'm sorry we couldn't get you out to Needles for a stint, but, you know. Well, you were on the dive team, so I bet you went out to the Colorado River Station. So, okay. I cannot really add anything to the many accolades that you're going to hear other than we thank you for your commitment to public safety. That is truly a calling. You know, it's, it's something that, that you truly gave your life to. And for that, we thank you so much. On behalf of Supervisor Rao and the Board of Supervisors, there's a whole lot of words here. I'll just read you the important parts. Thank you for keeping our community safe and for always going beyond the call of duty, and we wish you a long and happy retirement. Thank you. Oh, could somebody, could we?
Scott, you have to make sure that you show up that you're at work today?
I work from home.
All right, Brian. Well, we're going to, now it's our turn, and then we'll open up for public comment for you, too.
No.
Okay, so, you know, the night's all about you. You could come up here and sit in my seat, too, if you want to. So, you know, you could come up here and take over tonight, too, and I could go home.
All right.
Okay. But we have a couple of service awards for you, and one is, you know, you were a strong input for our city, for the, you and Johann and other residents, for our sheriff's substation, not official yet, but, you know, so we could have it here so, you know, our brothers and sisters in arms can, you know, go and relax and do their reports and, you know, have a place to, you know, a place to go instead of going to, you know, Chevron, you know, to hang out or go to restroom and stuff. So, but anyway, we have another plaque being made, but this is similar to what we have as certificate recognition, as a certificate is proudly presented to Brian Lane, Lieutenant, recognition of 29 years of service for your experience, service and dedication to duty. Adds to the highest standards for fellow, for your fellow officers to follow. We extend the deepest gratitude and best wishes for your retirement. And there's a little quote from Ronald Reagan, "There is no limit to what man can do or where he can go if he doesn't mind who gets credit." And that's like, yeah. So, yeah, you know who that's from?
Yeah.
Ronald Reagan, Johann Gallo, whatever. But it's signed by all of us, and we'll give you these plaques in a minute after we say some few words for you, you know. So, but we got a heavy one here. Now, this one in our city budget, so we can't afford additional officers because we paid for this plaque. This is like an iceberg award. Your wife can throw it at you. But you'll have to dust it every day. It says, "Congratulations on your retirement, Lieutenant Brian Lane. You have served the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office and the city of Grand Terrace's honor, dedication, and selflessness. As an embark in a new chapter of your life, we extend our deepest gratitude for your service. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, satisfaction, knowing that you may, you have done a profound difference in this city. April 8th, 2025, 29 years of service. See something, say something." So that's our new saying here, and I'll open up to the councils, then we'll hand you the plaque, and we'll take a picture, and then we'll open up public, okay? So, Councilmember Allen, would you like to say something for Lieutenant?
You bet. A big thank you. I've lived in this city for over 25 years, so I've seen the succession go, you know, that's how it goes with rotations. And I have worked with, over the years, in the council here with a few different ones who have, whose shoes you filled and the ones who are filling yours now. And, but I tell you what, Brian, you were, it was just a pleasure to work with you, and I always knew that Grand Terrace was safe and secure and in your mind all the time, and thank you for that.
Go ahead. Councilmember Wilson?
Lieutenant Lane, thank you. That's the best thing I can say at this point. Thank you so much for your, for your service, for your mindfulness, the way that you carried out your job in joy. Actually, the caring that you displayed was unmistakable, and so I greatly appreciate that. And as I know that you're going out to greener pastures and all that stuff, just don't try water skiing. But in the meantime, everybody in this city has been affected by your good service, so you take that with you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Brown?
Lieutenant Lane, you know, being the newest council member of this, this body, I haven't had much time to work with you in this capacity, but nevertheless, you have had a great impact on my life. It was about 15 years ago, right after I was sworn in by the sheriff as a reserve deputy, that you handed me my, a letter congratulating me with my first assignment. At that time, you were sergeant of volunteer forces. So that's something I'll never forget, and, you know, was very impactful. It, it kind of just reminds me of the many hats you wear, and anytime when you're in, in public safety and public service, you can't really under, you know, if you have to sit back and think about the enormity of the impact that you've had throughout your 30-year career, you know, on your colleagues, the people you've trained, the volunteers you've worked with, the, quite frankly, the victims that you've consoled, those notices that you had to give to people, medical aid you rendered, all those things were life-changing moments. They uplifted people, you know, you've helped people at their worst and at their best. And it's, it's, it's really an awesome job and an awesome responsibility. I, like I said, I wish we had more time to work together here in this community, but I appreciate all the groundwork that you've laid with our sheriff's substation here. And I was looking at my phone because my wife was trying to be here. My wife got to work with Lieutenant Lane as the chair of the Citizens Committee for Measure M, and she's stuck in traffic. But it's, even though that was only a few-month period where she was working directly with him to put together a ballot measure to try to protect our community, it was, it was important enough for her to want to be here tonight just to congratulate you on your retirement. And that's the type of impact that you've had on individuals, not only here in this city, but throughout your entire career. And I just hope you, you keep that in mind in your retirement. And thank you, Beth, for sharing him with all of us. And I just, you know, wish you both, you know, health and happiness and that just God blesses you for many years to come. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tempore?
Lieutenant Lane, thank you for everything that you've done. I hold our sheriff's department specifically in very high regard. And when people ask about our public safety, I always say, "Our sheriffs are a bunch of cowboys," you know, and they're out there and they're, you know, they're protecting, they're not only protecting the community, but they're connected with our community. And, you know, everything that you've done, being able to serve alongside of you and being able to assist getting Measure M on the ballot, your support in this community and with the substation, again, it speaks volumes to everything that you've done, sir. So congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your service, sir.
Well, I can't believe you want to leave us before the job's done.
[laughing]
So we still have a measure to pass, and we still have flock cameras to put up. So I'm going to tell the captain to rip up your retirement paperwork. But we're in good hands. Thank you for Lieutenant Frye's, you know, he's, he has big boots to fill, and, you know, he probably wishes that he was never in the city. He's like, what kind of mayor is that, you know? But anyway, thank you, Brian, for everything you've done. You know, you're, you're a good friend and, you know, conversations and, and you not only, you know, when we call up on the homelessness, that you try to get services to them, you go that extra mile, you know, you're involved with the community during our events, you're always here. We're not going to give up on the sheriffs, you know, we're still, you know, we, times have changed. And then if you ever want to go to lunch, if I need to go to lunch, I'm going to call you because I need backup from now on when I eat at places. So, yeah, so, but really appreciate you. You enjoy your retirement, if you're going to retire. You have any other plans?
Not sure there's one. Not at all.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate you, and we really appreciate all your hard work. I know you took over for Lieutenant Wolf and stuff. And, but, you know, we've been blessed, the city has, with the captain, with all the lieutenants that you've been giving us, and our sergeants and all the deputies here and stuff. And, and then it's just great to see him out there. It's great to, you know, to interact. Not only, you know, people are like, well, law enforcement, it's a lot more than law enforcement. You guys are, you know, psychiatrists, too, you know. You have to talk to, you know, there's a lot of mental illness out there. You've got a lot of hats you're wearing now, you know. I bet you when you joined the academy 29 years ago, you didn't think it was going to be all this stuff underneath your belt. So, yeah, and then, you know, community events and everything else. And then, plus, you were, you were on the dive team. So, did you have to do a high-speed pursuit after fish when you were on the dive team or anything like that, or?
They were all Aquaman.
Yeah. No, Aquaman or anything like that?
Yeah.
So what we're going to do, we're going to hand you the award. We'd like to have your wife up there, too, and Scott, and then, you know, the captain and the sergeant, sergeants, you know, guys come up for a picture, real quick?
Say some words.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead and say some words because the public wants to roast you, too, so.
Yeah. Well, I'll keep it brief. I think I've got it down to about 20 minutes. Right? Give me a microphone. I can, I could talk forever. Well, first of all, I'm speechless. Incredibly honored and humbled by everything that I just heard. I had no idea what I was stepping into 29 years ago, day one at the academy. I learned very quickly, a day that will live forever. And, and as I've sort of traversed this department and this county over the number of years, I have truly loved every one of my assignments, and each were so different. And really tried to, you know, put my best effort into, to what I was doing out there, which, which was, you know, to help people and try to make lives a little bit better, a little bit easier if possible. And I, I hope that I was able to do that for, for some folks. That was the goal. Along the way, you know, I was able to make countless friends within the department and within the communities that I served. The mountains were a big part of that. You know, I was up in Lake Eyrehead. Beth and I lived up there for 17 years. And during that time, I worked both for Twin Peaks and for Big Bear Station. So I traversed the mountain for a number of years up there, got to know a lot of people, a lot of very, very good people. And policing up in the mountains is quite different than down here. So coming to Central was a little bit of an eye-opener. But those are, those are different aspects to the job and the challenges. And, and, you know, we're always, we're always learning. Every day we go out there, we can never stop learning. And how we have to do things, it's, it's always ever-changing. And it was, it was always fun to, to kind of accept those challenges and, you know, just go out there to do the right thing. Could not have done any of that without the support of the wife and the family. And this, this career started late for me. It was, I was 32 when I started the academy. I was the fourth oldest. And I think that probably provided me some benefits and helped me through that process early on. But the kids were already born, and, you know, they're kind of wondering what dad's up to and where he is and why he's not home and why is he leaving on my birthday and all that kind of stuff. I missed a lot over the years, and, and that has not been, been lost on me that, you know, I, I gave up spending a lot of time at home and, and being with the family and the kids. And they understood. They knew what I was doing. And, you know, I appreciate all of their support and understanding for that. I was shooting for, for greener pastures, but when the beard came in, I found out it was grayer pastures. Had no idea, but I'm, I'm going to get used to it, I think. And, you know, I look, I look forward to what's ahead. We still don't know yet. There's a lot of, I think, good things on the horizon. I've, I'm, I'm blessed, I think, that my last assignment was here because working with the city and, and the council and people in the community over the years has really sort of felt like home here, you know? And I did, I think, really took an interest in a lot of the things that were happening in the city because the city is, is so strongly working towards providing, you know, the best living that it can for its, you know, its community and the businesses and the residents. And I enjoyed being a part of that in some small way. And I'm going to miss that. And the friends that I've, that I've made here, watching the city grow over the years since COVID, you know, it was, it was pretty wild at the beginning, and it has just completely blossomed and exploded in the city. It's just, it's healthy and it's thriving. And, and it's, I'm very happy to see that. So I wish nothing but the best for the city and the people that live here, and I think the sheriff's department moving forward, you know, pass Measure M or whatever the next measure it is that comes up for that tax increase to pay for law enforcement, I think is going to be a huge part of what happens next here in this city in terms of providing the level of service that, that I have always wanted to provide here. We, we have always done a lot with what we had, and we've done a good job. I think we can do better. And I think having extra people here in the city to cut down on response times and add some force multipliers and some, some additional layers of officer safety are key to that. And I think that makes everybody, puts everybody in a better place, puts the city in a better place than the residents and the deputies ultimately. So the safer that they can do their jobs, it is the better for everybody. I'm, I'm joined by some friends of mine, my boss, and some people that I've really grown to really appreciate and enjoy working with every single day. They're only here because they're just that much happier to see me go, finally. I'm sure there's probably more outside waiting to catch me at the door. But it is, it has been a blessing, and I'm going to miss these guys a lot. I'm not going to miss the work. I'm not going to miss any of that kind of stuff, but I'm going to miss the people the most. And, you know, hopefully people that I'll continue to stay in touch with for a very long time. So again, thank you very much. Scott, thank the supervisor for me. I was very, very kind. You called me, one of the few calls I got after I left or found out that I couldn't come to work anymore. And, and that meant a lot that you reached out to me. It really did. And I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, and I think, you know, really, I think I've got about another 16 minutes left. Is that right, sir? Okay. I'm, I'm done.
Daisy, hit that buzzer, will you?
Yeah. Again, I just want to say thank you so much to everybody. It was a pleasure working with everybody here in the pit and, and over the years. And again, I'm, I'm going to miss that. Wish everybody the best of luck in the future that they have and, and hope to run into folks on the street someday. So thank you all very, very much.
Well, thank you, Brian. You know, if you would have kept on talking, you'd be like a fireman. Well, if you could join us here and we'll take a picture, then I'll open it for public.
When you can wear this as a badge.
As I was telling Lieutenant Lane, we're going to have a plaque, and it's going to be mounted on, on the front door by the building for the sheriff's substation. And now I remember it's Lieutenant Lane, but to honor him. So every time the men and women go in there, they could think of Brian and thank him, and then, and Johann, too. So I'm going to open up for public comment. I'm sure John wants to say some words. So come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, Daisy, I'm doing your job.
Johann Gallo.
[laughing] I won't do it again. Don't, don't throw anything in.
You know, it's not that I really had to write it out. I just didn't want to forget anything. So as we honor Lieutenant Lane tonight, you know, I was really nervous when Lieutenant Wolf was going to retire because I didn't know who was going to fill his shoes. But Lieutenant Lane stepped up and did it in a large way. You know, he, anytime we called on him, he was there to help us, no matter what it was. And I'll always remember the first meeting we were in. Some of the members are here tonight. Chuck Cecil was there, Ed Giroux was there. We were meeting with, at that time, Councilmember Bill Hussey. And we were meeting with the current city manager at the time, and we, we did this rogue thing called the Santa Claus Toy Drive Cruise. And so we decided that, well, we probably ought to do it officially and file all the paperwork. And so the current city manager was quick to tell us that your parade is going to cost you $14,500. And we're like, oh, okay, that's dead. And so we're sitting there, and thank goodness for Ed Giroux, who's retired from CHP, and he goes, wait a minute. It doesn't have to be a parade. It can be a cruise. If it's a cruise and we limit it to a number of vehicles, we don't need blockades. We don't need all this stuff. And the city manager quickly came back and he goes, well, it's still going to cost you about $4,500 for the sheriff. maker. Councilmember at the time donated the beverage refrigerator. John's here. He, he donated the table and chairs. We have Greg over here that's still committed to do more than just a financial donation. He's gonna help make sure we get a shower to make one more step closer to getting an official substation. In the end, we raised almost ten thousand dollars for this project, thanks to the members of Grand Terrace Cars and Coffee, our business connections. Chuck Cecil, his grandson Alex and I and Lieutenant Lane, we installed the security system for the building. We did a lot of other stuff. But when everything was all said and done, one day Lieutenant Lane seemed off. And I said, what's the deal? He goes, I don't know. I'm not ready to talk about it. So then I get the call. I'm retiring. I'm like, what? I don't know. No, no, he, no, game's not over. You're not retiring. He goes, yeah. I said, well, you know, we still working on Measure M. We're doing all this stuff that we were in partnership with. Councilmember, now Mayor Brotem, was at the table when we were working on the Committee for Enhanced Law Enforcement with Lieutenant Lane. Jessica Brown was there. We had a lot of our members there. In the end, we may, we, we failed passing Measure M by a lousy two-hundred-and-fifty votes, but we're not giving up. So I'm forever grateful for the friendship that I have with Lieutenant Lane. We've become great friends through all of this. I appreciate the great shape he's left us in with Lieutenant Fries, who's continuing the magnificent work that Lieutenant Lane started with us. We know he's gonna leave a legacy with us with the substation. And I was honored to be invited to work on creating a plaque for him that'll be affixed to it once it becomes an official substation. But he's a great friend. We appreciate his twenty-nine years of service. And we'll forever be friends. Thank you.
Johan, maybe you worked him too hard. That's why he retired. I don't.
I know you did.
Daisy, we have anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, thank you, Brian. Oh, we have one more.
Sorry, we have one more. Tony Rosales.
Okay. Come on up, Tony.
Good evening. On behalf of the Assemblywoman, I just want to thank Lieutenant Lane, Assemblywoman Latice Castillo. Thank Lieutenant Lane for your service. Thank you for the twenty-nine years of service and sacrifice to the Grand Terrace community in San Bernardino County. It is not lost on the Assemblywoman, the great sacrifice that our public servants give day in and day out, and especially their families. And we thank you. The Assemblywoman is a proud supporter of public safety and all of our law enforcement. And I know she would, she could be here right now. If she wasn't in Sacramento, she would. And I just wanna thank you so much. All the words that the council members and that the community members have said, we just echo and we thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's not goodbye. It's see you later. And if you want a good real estate agent, we can hook you up. You can move to Grand Terrace. And one day you could be sitting up here in one of these seats. So, but what we're gonna do, we're gonna call a five-minute recess so everybody can shake hands with Lieutenant Lane, get some pictures that they want and stuff. And we really appreciate all your hard work. And, you know, we expect to see you, you know, back, you know, from time to time and go to lunch and, you know, hang out. But you're welcome to come every second and fourth Tuesday here too. And sit by John. He needs a friend. Gary misses ya. He didn't even recognize ya. He's like, yeah. Is that the new fire chief? That's what he was asking. He thought he was fired because he wasn't here last time. But we appreciate it, Brian. And God bless you and your family. And thank you for all your service and sacrifices and the family. That's a big thing. When you have a family backing you up on this job that, you know, you choose to protect the public, it's a big ask. And, you know, officers, they, they go to work every night or every day. They're not going there just saying, I'm gonna go shoot somebody. They're going there to hope to come back to their family and then make it to the, you know, the golden years, you know, retirement years. But I know you're always gonna be worried about your brothers and sisters in arms. And, you know, they are your extended family and they always will be. I know you'll always be worried about them, especially as a supervisor and stuff that you did. So, you know, they're gonna keep up the good fight and they're gonna keep marching. They're gonna protect the innocent. And, you know, thank God we have a strong assembly now, member and senator and, you know, Prop thirty-six passed. We still got some ways to go, but we're gonna make this state golden again. And that's where our goal is. So thank you, sir, and God bless you. All right, five-minute recess. All right, well, go ahead, Reekeveen. We're gonna, hey, Gary, when you retire, we'll do something for you after you leave. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyway, we're on Item D. The consent calendar, the following consent calendars items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the city council any one time without discussion. Any council member or citizen may request removal of the consent count of items. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, sir. But just for the record, there was a typo in the meeting minutes for March twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. I addressed that and I also left you guys a copy at the dais.
So we're good?
You're good.
All right. Was it because I said March twenty-five when we closed out that last time? Is my fault? No?
No.
All right. So there's no public comment. We'll close the public comment. Do you have a motion for approval?
I wanted to pull Items seven and eight.
You wanted to pull Items? Which one's seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, not eight. That's on public hearing. Item seven.
Item seven.
Right.
All right. So, anybody else want to pull anything?
So I'll make a motion for one through six.
One through six in a second. All right. Did you want, there's opposition on Item six. Did you want to talk about that? Matt, are you good?
There's some opposition on seven.
No, there's, I was just telling them if you wanted to pull. Okay, so we have a motion for Item one through six in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilman Allen, Item seven?
Yeah, it's, I'm looking at, I'm just on the agenda document on page three, the mayor authority to sign letters of support. And I can't remember what page it is in the agenda packet, but I just, I'm not opposed to that. I just would like an example of what that's talking about, what that means. That's all. And if it, if I need to ask the attorney or the city clerk, whoever can explain that to me.
I'll, I'll help try to.
What the difference between, I mean, how is this different than what we are doing now? That's all.
Yeah. So that was the thing, because now our items that, when, you know, we sent off in the league and stuff, it's city business. And Item seven was from, I got a letter from TNT asking for support as they go to Sacramento and talk with the senators and Assembly on support on stopping illegal fireworks from coming over to the state.
Oh, okay.
So we just gonna do like we did on our protocol thing. So I'll let the city attorney explain the process what needs.
Okay. Sure. In terms of procedure, the procedure is not changing, as I understand. So generally, this resolution, if adopted by the city council, would continue the procedure of authorizing and delegating the mayor to sign letters of support of usually legislation that's authorized by the, or consistent with the League of California Cities or the JPIA. That, this basically gives the guardrails to the mayor to proceed and issue a letter. If the council is given, when they're given the letter, any council member may say, you know what? I'd like to have a discussion on this one first before it is executed. And so the existing policy allows for that. The only thing that this is adding in is the suggestion that if a private business were to approach the city, the mayor would be authorized to sign that type of letter. So the question is, is that a policy that the council would like to approve?
Who, I'd like to ask the mayor. So who, who determines if, if you, if you sign it? I mean, do we support it unless we, is it automatically supported unless we oppose it? Or do, you know?
Well, we're a body. So just like what we have been doing, like when you get, you know, letters and it gets forwarded from the League of City or something.
Right.
And Daisy sends it out. And if one of you don't want to do that, then you're opposed of it. While the other ones are support, so you'd be on the opposal part. Same as this, because the, the private thing is they're going to Sacramento to lobby so illegal fireworks won't come into the state.
Yeah.
And to have more enforcement on it. So that's why it was brought to me. So I just can't say yes. You know, it's gotta go to the body. So that's when I sent it. And they said, well, we have to do something different because it's a private entity asking, you know, TNT's asking for our support to help support against, you know, legislation. So that's the only reason why this is on there. So it's still gonna go the same if you guys, just like something from the League of Cities you're, you're opposed of. It's the same process. So.
I'd like to ask you a question. Okay, because this issue that you got the letter for, that's, that's a great issue for us to give our support to. I absolutely do. But what if you opposed it? You, not us, but what if you got the letter and you opposed it? Would, would it be the same procedure?
It'd still go to you guys. Yeah. I mean, I'm just one vote.
Yeah. And, and even if you opposed it, if the other four of us supported it, you'd still sign it and send it up?
Yeah, I would still sign it, just like when we have agenda items and I voted no, but it's still passed by the body. I still gotta sign it.
Okay, no.
So that, once the vote's done, that's it.
Okay, yeah. Well, I move Item seven.
So attorney?
Yes. Just so you know your options, one option is to keep the policy as is, only applying to the league and to JPIA. And then if you, if you want to add business entities, those items would just be brought to the council. Because the, the one distinction I would say is with the JPIA and the league, they're statewide entities and their policies are generally consistent with what the city would, would approve. So there wouldn't be too much, you know, concern about differing views on, on the council. Always could be, but, but generally would be consistent with the policy. With respect to the business entity, again, like for example, that fireworks one, it may or may not, you know, the council may not be aware of that type of legislation. And so maybe it does warrant a discussion. But I just want to make sure that you're aware. You could simply just say, for those items, that has to come to the council first.
So you want to make a motion like that, Joe, for seven? Or are we good on that? Are we just, that's gonna be part of our policy?
It's up to you. You could put this in the policy, allowing the mayor to sign it, or you can just not include it, keep the policy as is. And then any times a business entity brings it up, we just put it on the agenda.
This really hasn't, hardly ever happened, has it? Is that, does it happen very often that a business entity does this?
No, this is the first time since I've been here. It's usually SCAG, JPIA, or the League of Cities.
Right. Yeah. But I would certainly think that, I would certainly want us to have the ability to be able to, to do that, to support our businesses in our city and our, who support our community.
And then if, and if we have opposition, maybe that's when we bring it to the council for discussion. If one person opposes it or a couple opposes it, and then we bring it to.
Correct. By putting it in the policy, that policy would allow for that.
Okay. So we could do that in the policy. All right. So I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I appreciate the policy coming forward. It, it does seem that there's a big hole in it that you could drive a truck through. And that is that current policy only allows for letters or requests to be processed that come from the League of Cities. But a good example would be if one of our, our assembly members or senators carries a piece of legislation for the city and requests a letter of support from us, this policy doesn't cover that. And that doesn't make any sense to me at all, why we would have to wait for the league to take a position rather than being supportive or opposing a piece of legislation that directly impacts the city. So I would like to see this policy amended.
I thought we already did something like that when they came up. But have you ever had a, I don't think we ever had that, them come up and ask us for support. Did we?
So our fantastic new Assemblymember Castillo is carrying a piece of legislation that was in direct response to our emergency declaration. And it's, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's essentially a seven thousand dollar, up to a seven thousand dollar tax rebate for, for our residents who have had to purchase backup power generators. And that's something I fully support and would love to see the city, you know, get behind and send, you know, a letter up to Sacramento to the Assemblymember's office in support of her legislation. We haven't done so and we don't have a policy in place, my understanding, to do so without the council taking a formal action.
Yeah. So what they usually do, like the league and everything else, so formally ask the council for our support. And then that's when the letter goes out. So we could put that in there for that if we have legislation right, Adrian? Be the same type?
Yes, if the council wants to include.
But if they formally ask, hey, because we know what's going on, or one of you council members asked too, hey, we see this and they want to do that, bring it to, you know, you forward it to everybody and Daisy, our city clerk, and that's how we do it. So we could put that policy in here too, like not only private, but, you know, our senate or our legislation, you know, and if it's formally asked that we are in support of it. Is that what you want to do on that thing?
Yes, that would be my proposed amendment, as long as the city attorney concurs.
Yeah, because the big thing is we're asking for yours, because we know what they're doing and we want to support them because they are doing it for us. But we just, you know, have to have that asked too. Are we just, are one of us take the initiative and say, they're doing this, can we support it? And then it goes to the whole council and they read it. And so we'll add that in part of the writing, Adrian?
Yes. I mean, I, I will note that when I, when I read this provision previously, my thought was this contemplated a situation where, you know, the league was having to act fast, where the city council had to act fast and we didn't have time to put it on the agenda. You know, if we wanted to, we could simply use that only in those cases where it's like very time sensitive. But everything else comes to the council.
Well, from my standpoint, though, I would like to see our city government be a little more efficient. And it seems to me a waste of staff time to have staff prepare an agenda item and us to have a formal discussion on an item that is something that we're all supported about.
Sure. So, so if the direction then is to include a, a provision in here in addition to the business entity, but also any legislation, proposed legislation, is that?
Yeah, just like what we're doing now. It just goes to the council. Everybody agrees and it gets sent off for support.
Right. Well, technically, you're agreeing in, in this resolution, you're giving the guardrails because otherwise it would be deemed a Brown Act issue if you're saying, well, then it's subject to a second approval. So that's why we need to be clear that you have the guardrails and delegation to, to do the signature on the document. So how, how would you want it? Just any proposed legislation that's?
I don't think, I don't. I don't think that the statement was for any proposed legislation, but there's legislation being carried in Sacramento with Grand Terrace's and Hurpa Valley's name on it, specifically Grand Terrace.
and we wanna support them, 'cause they are doing it for us, but we just, you know, have to have that asked too. Are, are we just, are one of us take the initiative and say, they're doing this, can we support it? And then it goes to the whole council and they read it, and, so we'll add that in part of the writing, Adrian?
Yes, I mean, I, I will note that, when I, when I read this, uh, provision previously, my thought was, this contemplated a situation where, you know, the league was having to act fast, or the city council had to act fast, and we didn't have time to put it on the agenda. You know, if we wanted to, we could simply use that, only in those cases where it's like, very time sensitive, but everything else comes to the council.
Well.
Just a thought.
From my standpoint, though, I would like to see our city government be a little more efficient, and it seems to me a waste of staff time to have staff prepare an agenda item and us to have a formal discussion on an item, and that is something that we're all supported about.
Sure. So, so if the direction then is to include a, a provision in here in addition to, uh, the business entity, but also, uh, any legislation, uh, proposed legislation, is that?
Yeah, just like what we're doing now, it just goes to the council, everybody agrees, and it gets sent off for support.
Right, well technically, y- you're agreeing in, in this resolution, you're giving the guardrails, because otherwise it would be deemed a Brown Act issue, if you're saying, well, then it's subject to a second approval. So that's why i- we need to be clear that you have the guardrails and delegation, um, to, to do the signature on the document. So, how, how would you want it, just any proposed legislation that's?
I don't think that the statement was for any proposed legislation, but there's legislation being carried in Sacramento with Grand Terrace's and Hurpa Valley's name on it, specifically Grand Terrace. Therefore, this governing body should be standing with our, our assembly member, and that, that's the request, and considering how things move in Sacramento, things can be bumped up to be heard to avoid, um, public comment and groups of people coming in to make statements. And so sometimes those things get pushed through right away that don't allow us time to be able to come back and, and discuss that matter here at the dais.
Got it, okay, so.
If it's purely on ti- a time basis, excuse me, purely on a time basis, uh, in the past, we've had a situation where we needed to be able to meet a deadline or, uh, a circumstance, and if I remember right, it may have been when Duffy was here, uh, there was a minute action that was used. Is there some kind of a limitation on a minute action where you could, this was, you know, it didn't have to have a tremendous amount of public notice, it could happen, you know, within seventy-two hours, and laws was distributed to the various council members? How does that work as opposed to this?
So, if, if it was a minute action, then what I anticipate he did was, he put something on the agenda, a very brief description on the agenda, there may not have even been a staff report or anything.
Right.
Just saying, consent to, let's issue a letter of support for X, Y, and Z.
Right.
And the council just approved it, without a letter, without a staff report.
And if I remember right, it had something to do with a, uh, uh, basically a, an extra meeting, because, so he could call, you know, the, I think the city manager through the mayor initiated a, a special meeting, and really, it's about all we did at that particular meeting.
Correct, and, and I think, yeah, you could do that on twenty-four hours' notice.
There you go.
Yes, as a special meeting.
So, yeah, we need to definitely, if we're asking our assembly and our senate to do something for Grand Terrace to better our community and keep us safe, and during that, you know, s- city of emergencies, so we could try to get generators and everything else, we definitely need to be on board of backing them up, but, you know, we're asking for a big thing, and we need to be supporting them, so, Councilman Allen?
So, um, I'm, what you two were talking about there, down there, and then when Mayor Portem was talking about how her interpretation of, of your motion, I think, and, but, and I like that, it's great, and I want us to support, especially when our name is there, and I, so I agree with all that, but I would like to see any revisions or updates or whatever we do decide to do, that it is not specific just to that legislation, but it, and limits us only to that, but that it is broad enough that any future legislation that we want to either support or oppose, we can do that, not just this one specifically that has our name in it. You know, because we may have our name in another one in, in, in a few months, who knows? That assembly member, she's going after it, you know?
Yes, we get updates every day, we appreciate our hard work and our center. So, uh, do we have direction?
I think I have direction, I could bring it back, so you have the language, I could put the language in, and we could put it on consent calendar next time.
Okay.
Unless the council wants to, just give me the direct language tonight. Unlike an ordinance, I have some discretion to, you know, put it in, subject to your, uh, direction.
Okay, so, just a clarification, if, if one of us on the council know our assembly or senators running things, and they wanna bring it to the council, just, you know, while violating the Brown Act for no reply, you know, will attach Adrian to the, the memo too? You wanna be attached to it, or?
Well.
If they have a legislation that's gonna be coming up next week on the floor, and we need it ASAP, do we call a special meeting for that, or do we just go ahead and, no matter council doesn't disagree with it, we just move forward?
So, with a, it, currently, I would say you, you call a special meeting, you notify the city manager and call a special meeting. If you wanted to add it to the policy so that you're authorized in the policy, then
Well, like Councilman Brown, we wanna expedite it too.
Right.
So instead of wasting staff time and everything.
Correct, I agree.
And we all agree on it, and they're doing it for our city, why not expedite it?
Yes, so, so long as we have the language in there that, uh, it's legislation bearing Grand Terrace's name, if you said, Lomelinda?
A- actually, I don't, I don't wanna overcomplicate it, and what I'm, what I'm asking simply is, we have a practice in place that if we receive a request from the League of Cities, that we can send a letter.
Correct.
This item allows us to send a letter on behalf of a private entity. If we receive a request from a legislative office, I wanna be able to send a letter. It's, it would be consistent with our current practices and what's being proposed in this item, it's not anything more complicated than that.
Agree.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I agree, it's just really the language that we're putting in, but, yeah, in concept, I one hundred percent agree.
And, and I would point out that about ninety-nine point nine percent of the legislation in Sacramento does not mention the city of Grand Terrace, but it, most of it impacts the city of Grand Terrace, so it behooves us to have a policy that's broad enough that it shouldn't have to mention our city.
I agree.
Thank you.
So we're coming back for item seven then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it back.
Okay.
But I, I think it's Councilman Brown's, yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward, it's, yeah.
Well, that's what we're here for, to make everything straightforward.
You can withdraw your motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll officially withdraw it.
And we'll bring it back.
It's gonna be brought back, so item seven will be brought back, so we'll go ahead and close the consent calendar. Public hearing, item eight, continued public hearing, zoning amendment, ZCA twenty-four oh four, introduction and first reading ordinance admitting to Grand Terrace Municipal Code, presented by Gabriel. Your boss got promoted, now you gotta do the working up here, is that why?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, members, uh, council members, and thank you, uh, members of the public. Uh, my name's Gabriel Argüés, I'm the assistant planner here for the city of Grand Terrace, planning and, uh, community development. This is a continued item, zoning code, uh, zoning code amendment, ZCA two-four dash zero four. The attached items, there's zoning code amendment staff report, we have the attached findings, the red light, uh, red line edits to it with, that is attachment two, and the environmental exemption, that is attachment three. A brief background on this item, um, in twenty-twenty-four, the city updated their standard hours of operation for businesses. The council directed staff to go through the municipal code and to ensure noise, business hours are all in sync. The zone code amendment, uh, represents that, a cleanup item for various chapters in the municipal code. This went to planning commission on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, also on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. All recommendations are incorporated. City count, the, this item went to city council on three twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, and today on four eight, twenty-twenty-five, and all recommendations are incorporated. The revisions for the last hearing is, um, the city council gave us direction for home occupation permit, chapter five point zero six, and massage parlors and massage technicians, chapter five point four eight, to replace all use of massage parlor with massage clinic. Next, uh, item is gonna be, uh, an edit made to noise, chapter eight point one zero eight, to add language that the building official may, in their reasonable discretion, extend or limit construction hours in section eight point one zero eight point zero six zero. The next item is wireless communications facilities in the public right-of-way, chapter twelve point five six, to make section twelve point five six point zero seven zero read better, so testing times and run times of the generators are clearer. Additionally, um, the planning department has proposed revisions to chapter eighteen point six four, objective design standards, to add an alternative to lead for smaller projects of ten dwelling units or less. Section eighteen point six four point zero four zero, sustainable design, now has a Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready Home Program requirements for smaller projects of ten dwelling units or less, and a lead requirement for larger projects over ten dwelling units. In conclusion, all findings of facts have been made, there is no fiscal impact, the environmental review, uh, is exempt from CEQA, it's a common sense exemption, no physical impact to the environment. This report is consistent with the twenty-thirty vision statement, and second reading will be scheduled on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Staff recommends to conduct this public hearing to have an introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city council approving ZCA two-four dash zero four, with the additional, with the addition of language that the building official may adjust construction hours. Provide direction on land uses. That was a carryover item. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'm available.
So council have any questions? Councilman Allen?
On packet page one ninety, in the second and the third paragraph, the term massage parlors is used. And, uh, is there a reason why that has not been changed? Does it, does that need to remain? Because in the very, in the third paragraph, it also, it actually uses the, the term establishment, which is pretty common, you know, generic term that works real well. In fact, the California Massage Therapy Council, which is the certifying agency for state-registered, certified massage therapists and technicians, uses that term, establishment.
Right.
And, yeah.
And can you repeat that page number?
One ninety, packet page one ninety. So, I'm, if, you know, the thing is, is if, if it needs to be corrected, but I, it, because there's another part of this that kinda bothers me also. You know, uh, on packet, um, the next page down, it talks about the fee structures, or it doesn't give the dollar amount, but it talks about all the variety of, of things that our city requires an applicant who wants to open up a practice in our city, all the extra, extra onerous burden that's placed upon them because it's a massage establishment, as opposed to just about any other establishment. And so, the, the point is, the, the problem I have with this entire chapter is that it's, I think it could be written much more professionally. It, it's sort of, it, it tries to obfuscate and tap dance around the issue and not use very professional wording, and, and I think a good example of a very professional one is the city of Redlands' chapter on this, and I would just think that if you reviewed it, you would see that, um, it uses, it, it treats the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the practice with respect, and, you know, all kinds of occupations out there have bad actors in them, you know, but we don't need to do a, you know, uh, you know, wink, wink out of the sun, talk out of the side of our mouths about it. So, I would just recommend that, or just ask that we make these other corrections about the terminology, and take a look at Redlands' ordinance on this, I've read both ours and theirs, and I've read Colton's and San Bernardino's and all of them, you know, and I just think Redlands has a really respectful, professional, modern, well-written, concise ordinance.
And, uh, I believe what you're mentioning about the, um, massage parlors, it's, it's a header on, uh, the resolution, and it's, it's, it's just referencing the chapter that's being changed. And so, on the red line edits themselves, on attachment two, um, all those corrections are, uh, made, are crossed out and then replaced with clinic.
Okay.
Um, but on your second point, um, we could definitely, um, you know, come back with the, for this exercise, we're simply, you know, addressing noise, uh, you know, addressing small area miscellaneous revisions, uh, for this zone code amendment. And so, for a chapter overview or of the, the massage parlor, or, excuse me, massage clinic chapter, um, we can definitely look at that at a later time.
Yeah, um, okay, yeah, whatever, I just think it needs to happen, because, like I said, you know, we, there's a, it's expensive to go into any kind of a business today, to open up a business of any kind, and, and I don't think we need to add any financial burden on to someone when, when, like, for, the, the example I wanna give you is the California Association, or, I mean, I'm sorry, the California Massage Therapy Council, it was formed by a law passed in the state legislature, and this council is tasked with certifying therapists and technicians in this state. And the, so the therapists and the technicians pay fees to them to do everything that we ask them to do, background checks and all that stuff, and then, when they come to us with all that, then we have, then we charge them another fee to do that all over again locally here, so.
Right.
I just, and, and, and so I just think, things like that, it just seems a little bit onerous burden on that, a little bit unfair, you know?
I understand, and, um, you know, there, there will be in the future, uh, many more zone code amendments, uh, to fix items like you're, like what you're saying, and so I do suggest that we take that upon, uh, the, the revisions to that chapter then.
Does the acting city manager have any comment?
I think Assistant Planner Argüéllis, um, has a good point, there's a, a lot of things we need to repair and fix up in our municipal code and zoning code, and the massage is clearly one of them. I know just in briefly speaking with the city attorney, um, the massage has been completely eliminated from the zoning code at some point in the recent past, which is understandable, 'cause as you mentioned, council member, that the state regulates massage now through the, I think it's called the CAMTC, as you mentioned, and so we have to treat massage clinics as any other type of service use, professional service use, such as like a nail salon, and so on and so forth, and that the folks that work there go through this proper screening and permitting and licensing through Sacramento. So regarding the chapter five point four eight, it looks like it might be overall, um, very old language, as you noted, it's crude in how it's written, so likely it's possible, um, if we come back with a amendment, we might recommend just deleting the whole chapter, it might not even be applicable anymore because of what's changed with Sacramento, as you mentioned with the recent legislation in the last five, ten years. Uh, since the zoning code's already been sanitized, the massage clinic, um, language, it looks like, uh, there is still some language hidden in that licensing section, chapter five point four eight. So I think, uh, as me and Gabriel, Assistant Planner Argüéllis, work through doing future updates, the next one we do, we could definitely come back, and that'd be a key core component of our updates of the municipal code.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Portem, you had something you wanna say?
I just wanna thank you for the revisions, um, it's noted that on page one ninety-four, you, the department does indicate, staff indicates, that the verbiage is being replaced throughout the document, and so it's already stated there, um, as well as, if you move on to page one ninety-eight, um, the, um, the terminology is changed there, so, page one ninety-four, um, it, had we gone just a little bit further, states that the changes are being made, and this is what it's being changed to, and as of page one ninety-eight, those are the revisions, so I thank you for the work that you've done, and I appreciate you taking that information and bringing this forward today.
Of course.
Okay, any other questions? On the, chapter ten point one six, storage of vehicles in intersection instructions, so, we're just reemphasizing how many, the vehicles can be stored and everything else on there, or can we have storage of vehicles that'd be covered, or?
Um, I believe on that chapter, we're just simply taking out the, the pictorals of the RVs in, in that section, and so that's regulated under a different chapter, and so we're just excluding it from this chapter here.
Okay, 'cause one of my questions wasn't, is it gonna be an agenda item that I'm gonna bring up, is for, what you said about RVs, people that have homes. I'm going to bring up is for, what you said about RVs, people that have homes, but they're parking their RVs on the streets, and they're obstructing view, they're having blind spots, and the only reason they're parking on the streets is because, one, they won't clean their yard to put their RV there, or two, they got too much, they just want to just do it, and, you know, if, I don't want, you know, I have a trailer, but I don't want my neighbor's trailer parked in front of my house. So is this going to cover that? Then that we could go after them for code violations if they, or I'll bring it to Jim. My thing is, they're allowed to park on public right-of-way for three days, but they have the room to store their RV or trailer in their lot, but they don't want to do it because they got other stuff there. So now they're putting a hand around everybody else in the neighborhood by moving and playing musical chairs with their RV. Is this covering that part?
Right. And so not this chapter per se, but, you know, I'm, I'm not sure the exact chapter, but it does regulate street parking for RVs. And it is enforceable. So, and it does allow RVs to be parked on private property, you know, side yard, backyard also. But, you know, I think for what you're asking is, is it enforceable? And yes, it is.
Well, is it enforceable for the road? Because they have the adequate storage, but they don't want to store it there, but they're parking on public right-of-way and obstructing public view for blind spots on the streets, and pretty much not being very good neighbors by parking in front of somebody else's house when they're just don't want to store in their own lot. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right. And so they're, they're using, you know, the public street as the storage for their RVs. And so, you know, that would be a code enforcement issue, but regulated on a different chapter.
Okay. Mayor Prochamie has something? She's faster with a computer than I am.
Control find is a friend. Section 10, point 16, point 021 is where the recreational vehicles are indicated on page 186, if anybody wants to reference that.
The thing is, is, but they still have off-street parking regulations. And my thing is, they can park for three days. I mean, that's right, three days, right? 72 hours?
Yes.
But then they can play musical streets and still block other people's homes because they don't want to park on their lots. And they're still within policy.
Right.
Okay. So for me to get that changed, we have to bring an agenda to change that?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll just do that. We'll follow up on that. I just wanted to see, I don't want to do too much staff work because I was really, I didn't see anything on it.
No, that, that could be a part of our, you know, second zone code amendment, the cleanup item. Just, we could tag it on with, you know, Jeff Allen's.
So can we do something like that?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. Because, you know, it's, I'm all for our, and we had the discussion, it's just that it's not right for them that don't want to park it in their lot and just take away the streets. Some of these streets are narrow, and they're, they're using it, and then, you know, they're, they're blocking other people's view. They're not being very good neighbors. So as, as a city, we're not an H O A, but we still have to maintain a, a nice living environment here and take care of other people. So if we could add something like that in there. Any other questions? Now, did it say, I should read this more, but, not my fault, for the, the vehicles, commercial vehicles being parked? You know, I know we have an ordinance for that they can't be parked in driveways, like?
Absolutely.
Semis, bobtails. And we're having a lot of commercial vehicles being parked, like, example, Walgreens. And our fines are very limited, they're like $30. So they rather pay $30 and park at Walgreens than go to the truck stop and pay. Do we have to bring something about additional fees for that on something else on a future agenda, or is, can we put it in here?
Fees?
Fines, I mean.
Fines, yeah, that would have to be brought back separately.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I'm not doubling load. So, thank you, Gabriel. And Scott, do you have anything else to add to this before we do public comment?
No, I think those are good points, and we can explore fixing the code some more regarding RV parking and trying to address those issues on the street and parking lots.
Okay. City Council have anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and, and close that. We'll open a public comment. Does we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, well, public comment, public hearing, council deliberated on the public items, and council vote on items with, this is just a, are we voting tonight for this?
If the council so directs, yes, it would be a first reading of the ordinance.
So we're voting on the first reading?
Yes.
All right. Do you have a motion approval for staff recommendation?
Motion to approve? Go ahead.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
All right. City Attorney, you have anything to add for, before you make a?
Uh, no, the, the motion to, for the record, is to introduce the ordinance, waive reading of the ordinance and read by title only, and I'll read the title of the ordinance. The title of the ordinance, and just, just for the, I know all of it. Just for the record, the second word in the title, the title needs to be corrected, ordinance at the end. So with that said, the title of the ordinance is as follows, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Grand, ordinance of the City Council of Grand Terrace, California, approving zoning code amendment ZCA 24-04, amending the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Chapter 5.06, Home Occupation Permits, Chapter 5.40, Garage Sales, Chapter 5.42, Integrated Waste Management, Chapter 5.48, Massage Parlors and Massage Technicians, Chapter 8.108, Noise, Chapter 8.112, Fireworks, Chapter 9.05, Vending on City Sidewalks, Chapter 10.16, Storage of Vehicles, Intersection Obstruction, Chapter 12.32, Conduct in Public Property Parks, Chapter 12.56, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 5, 15.56, Water-Efficient Landscape, Chapter 18.10, Residential Districts, Chapter 18.53, A G Agricultural Overlay District, Chapter 18.56, A G dash 2, Agricultural 2 Overlay District, Chapter 18.64, Objective Design Standards, Chapter 18.80, Signs, and Chapter 18.82, Standards for Specified Land Uses and Activities, and a determination that ZCA 24-04 is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline, Section 15061B3, Common Sense Exemption. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so first, a second, please vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Did your light light up?
Yeah, your vote was yes.
Okay. This light's broken. We didn't leave you in the dark, Doug. All right, unfinished business done, new business done. Future agenda items, does anybody have a future agenda items they want to bring up? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to have, have a discussion with the rest of the council about forming a special district to support our parks and recreation areas. And I would also like to have another agenda item. I'd like to have a discussion to officially, officially form a firewise council in our community to better support our residents on hardening their home, home hardening efforts.
So, I'm sorry, what was the first one again?
It's, uh, have a discussion on, uh, forming a special district to, uh, support our parks and recreation areas.
Okay. So you just want to have items, agendas for those two?
Correct. I want to, yeah, and then get a report back and have a discussion on it.
Okay, open up for discussion. Okay, I'll second that. Does council have any comments on that? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to bring a couple. Um, one, Gabriel, thank you for your thing. And I know you've been waiting to talk all day, huh, about it? But, um, thank you. It was, I was concerned about RV parking on the streets and interrupting people's neighborhoods. You know, believe me, I, I have a trailer, but, you know, we stay within the guidelines, and even I had to move mine back from what it was, and, you know, because, and the city manager did tell, hey, you better give the mayor a citation because he'll be mad if you didn't. And, um, we don't get any special privileges here. But, you know, it's, it's a shame when somebody's holding somebody's property hostage, you know, in their neighborhood. So on that note, I'd like to have a discussion on having, and I know it's a state law, of people having an auto shop garage repair facility in their home, not to work on their own cars, but to work in there, having a business there. So I'd like to see what code can do to that and make sure code enforcement follows up with the state Bureau of Automotive, so there'd be place for that. And another thing I'd like to have a discussion on, I'm not a big person about fines, but fines are meant for diversion, so people won't do it again. But the fines on commercial trucking, parking in our, on city streets, homes, and our businesses. Now, they go to business and shop, that's fine, but to be there long-term, like they have been at Walgreens, and even one time they had a reefer unit going. So those people, those people in the townhouses had to smell that exhaust all the time. So that's not, that's not fair for them who are paying good money for rent or who bought those homes. So that'd be my two things. Having us look into, um, expediting, uh, car auto repair shops and residence facilities where they're pretty much sabotaging or taking over their whole streets for their own auto repair. And I caught one that was even parked on the dri, on the sidewalk. He had so many cars in his driveway, he was parking on the sidewalk. So there you go for ADA violation. And the other ones fines to increase for commercial trucking. So that's my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council members. Um, City Council Communication, Councilmember Matt Brown. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jeff Allen?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Since the last meeting, I attended, on March 27th, it was a Thursday morning, I attended the Riverside Highland Water Company Board of Directors Meeting. And, um, other than routine actions, the only thing that I can, I, is that they re-elected three members, Director Jim McNaboe and Director Dennis Kidd, and I can't remember the third person's name of the board of directors that was re-elected. And, um, on Tuesday, April 1, I attended the S C E, the Edison Outage School over at the Senior Center. It was a pretty interesting event, and I'm glad I went there and attended that and met with the folks, other people that went there. I want to, I wish Mark Cloud and his colleagues could be here tonight so we could formally thank them, but I really appreciated that. He, uh, the, he's our representative, and two of his colleagues from Edison coming and spending the evening with those residents who showed up. On Wednesday, this, uh, April 2, I attended the office, San Bernardino County Office of Homeless Services, Central Valley Regional Steering Committee Board Meeting, of which I sit on that, uh, board. And, uh, you know, the discussion is centering right now around, well, what are we going to do because of the federal funding that's been cut? You know what I mean? So, but they're working the issue, yeah. And, um, I just wanted to also advise anybody in the veteran, and all the people in, in the, in the veteran community who are listening, on April 17th at 3:00 PM at the Orange Show, it'll be the annual Military Appreciation Dinner. If you're in the, if you're a veteran or in the military, check that out. I'm sure that they will probably have SOS on the menu. And they always do. They, never can get rid of that PTSD. Bring it on that, bring me some more SOS. On, uh, April 12, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, that's a Saturday, in Rancho Cucamonga, there'll be a Veteran and Community Resource Fair at the Rancho Cucamonga Sports Center. That's 8303 Rochester Avenue in Rancho. Be veteran services representatives there, veteran service officers will be there, elected representatives will be there, and that sort of thing. Last thing I want to ask my fellow members, especially the mayor, so Cal Cities is wanting to start, trying to start a Veterans Caucus. And I know you're something with Cal Cities, I think. Anyway, they have to have 50 cities sign on and send in an interest form. I attended the, on the Zoom meeting with the, the reps who are trying to start the caucus, you know, from other cities. There was, I think, four or five of them. And I sent a reply email that I personally wanted to, but I just wanted to, I had mentioned it once earlier at one of our meetings. I think we need to somehow figure out how we either, what we need to do to either officially support that or join it, or make sure that a Veterans Caucus gets formed at Cal Cities, because there's some good veteran legislation this year that needs support.
We have a meeting next month in Redlands, and if you could be there, and then I'll introduce you so you could bring it up to the, the other legislature's body there.
Okay.
So we could talk about it, and we could put it on agenda things. So, no, it's a good thing to have.
You know the procedure, though, that you have, they have to follow to get a caucus started, a new caucus?
And we'll, and we'll?
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll get with the President, Christine Scott, because I'm the vice president, and we'll see if we can move it forward, and we'll talk to, and then move it up the chain to get it pushed forward.
Right on.
We, we definitely, that should be part of a Cal City event.
Yeah, right on.
That'd be great to have everybody on their caucus for, um, the whole state of California. Because I know you mentioned about, you know, the property tax, you know, 175,000, where homes cost more than that now. If you have a veteran that's 100% and seriously disabled, you know, that, pretty much, it should be free, but, you know, there's some pay, but, you know, 175,000 doesn't go a long way anymore.
Yeah.
It's got to be updated, so.
Well, all this veteran legislation that's going down, right, going this year, has got wide support by party support, and I'm real happy that Tony's here, and, and you were telling me that Assembly Member Castillo got on board with the, the legislation for veterans, and I appreciate that. Okay, so?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll bring that up to, um, Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also attended the Southern California Edison School thing, and unfortunately degenerated into a, into a complaint session in relation to who's going to pay for people that lost food in their refrigerator. Uh, I, I think I see that the only way that we're really going to accomplish what we need is for Edison to get their planners to start making a determination how we're going to rewire the circuits. And so I came prepared with that information, but it, we, that's not how the, the meeting went, so I appreciate the effort, but it's going to take some bigger heads in Edison to help us out rather than some, some of the underlings. Anyway, uh, now, as we can foresee, the, the near future, we're going to have a bunch of revisions in our ZCA that will cope with, uh, something that's been kind of a longstanding concern about sound within the City of Grand Terrace, noise, and so on. I applaud that greatly. That's exactly what we need. For some reason, uh, back when I was a kid, and we used to put thrush mufflers on our, on my GTO, and anytime I went past a neighborhood, I had somebody shaking her fist at me because they, you know, couldn't get away with that anymore. But now, it seems like we got a bunch of idiots and rice burners that, you know, get away with whatever they want. Uh, so my question to the sheriffs is, and you can think about this for a while, but just come back to us. What equipment does the sheriff need to enforce our noise ordinances that we should have in place within just a little bit?
Well, as, as far as mufflers or exhaust, if we can deem that it's been altered from its original state, it is a vehicle code violation. Um, the Sheriff's Department does, we don't have any current training on decibel readings. That's strictly CHP. I don't believe the Sheriff's Department offers any of those classes, but I could reach out to CHP to see if we can get people enrolled in those classes. But as far as the modified exhaust, it's 21750A is this vehicle code violation. So it is something that we can enforce.
Well, our municipal code, section 8.108, is what you're going to enforce. Well, our municipal code, section eight point one oh eight, is what you're going to enforce here. But in the meantime, are you sure there isn't something in the vehicle code that says that you guys have the teeth to be able to march that down? So even though it may have been neglected in the overall game planning, it would seem to me that it might be something that we want to try to see how we're going to solve the situation.
Yeah, like I said, our deputies can cite for modified exhaust if they can, if they deem that it's been modified and excessive. And like I said, that's twenty, twenty-seven one fifty is the vehicle code violation.
Super duper. Thank you. All right, we'll work together and figure out how we're going to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Not a whole lot to share on my end. Just a reminder, we have an upcoming Earth Day event here in the city. Anyone who would like to volunteer or if you would like to request a tree be planted in your parkway. April tenth is the deadline. If you haven't seen it, you can go on social media to find it. There's also just the facts online. And lastly, the mayor and Ms. Chanita Tillman and I will be traveling to Sacramento, not only just to meet with our legislators, but with others to be able to talk about our needs here in the city specific related to infrastructure and public safety. And we're looking forward to giving a report back at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, when we're traveling to Sacramento, we got to work on the plane because we have a small budget, so we don't get a free seat, so. So anyway, on Earth Day, that's great. Can people come to my backyard and work? I've got a lot of work to do. No? All right. I tried. So, yes, I attended the workshop for Edison too. And we are trying to, one of the big things is to try to get generators for the apartments and also any low house income seniors that are living here. So they have, you know, a number here and, you know, posted on our city page. But one of the issues there is when the residents are calling, they're asking for account number and their account number's umbrella account that falls underneath the corporation. Well, now the corporation doesn't qualify for those generators because they make too much. It's, it's crazy, the red tape, so. They're going to look into it to see what they need to do. I don't know why they're, don't say, hey, wait a minute, the people who are living here are low income and they can't afford it anyway. What's going on? I mean, it's just a common sense thing, but like I said, there's always red tape, but they are going to work on that and will maintain, we're going to be the greasy wheel on that. And part of that greasy wheel is, they're talking about the rewiring. It's in the works, the process to do that circuit and some of the other circuits. And Mayor Proten, we're talking, you know, to get a, a working thing in order to, you know, because to at least be the, what'd you say, the, the, the harden our lines to be the, I can't think of the word, being the example, but.
The pilot.
Yes, so there you go. So, but since Grand Terrace is so vital, they should harden our, you know, substations and stuff. If we're going to supply power to twenty-nine palms and everything else, you'd think they would take care of the heart of this situation. So we're working on that, but the big thing is it's going to take a year to try to rewire just that one little section because you have all the environmental impacts, you have all what they can do. If that circuit can handle a load somewhere else, there's a lot of engineering that's going for it, so. We're still working on it. We don't want the long-term solution to be, hey, we're going to turn off the power. We want the long-term solution to, hey, we got a, a protocol here that we're going to do when we shut off this power and these people won't, will be out lights. And that brings us to what they said on, you know, I know we opposed one, one-one-one and one-one-two-one, which is to make sure you can still buy gas appliances, which the senior apartments don't and new housing don't. They want everything electric. So we had the Environmental Clean Air come to S B C T A and they're telling us that you can still buy gas appliances. They're going to let you go ahead and do it, but the big but is you're going to be paying more. Now, it's your low income, so you're going to, the manufacturers only allow the manufacturers so much. Once they get to a threshold, they're going to be charged a hundred to two hundred dollars per unit. And it's up to the manufacturers that are going to cost, bring that cost down to consumer, which they will be. So we still held our ground at S B C T A and we said we still oppose it. They should just wipe it off. I mean, you should have two sources of utilities and not just be to one, especially the way our power grid is here in this state and unreliable it is. I mean, it's a pie in the sky. And then, of course, my comment was you could put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. So they were just trying to pretty it up and it ain't going to work. So we're still fighting that. But they were saying like offsets and everything, so they were just, we're not going to buy it. Tomorrow, I have career day at the middle school. I get to talk to these kids for four hours. I don't know if I'm talking about the Marine Corps or working in the prison or being the mayor. So, the easiest jobs in the world. And then on S B C T A, Dr. Wolf is no longer going to be the director. We voted on an in-house promotion. Carrie Shavel, she's going to be the new director of S B C T A. Hopefully, we're working on a deputy director. We have mine for, I don't know where it's going to go, but hopefully they find one, but it's still running. So that's going to be the new one. I don't know if you guys even know Dr. Wolf. And the last thing, I went to L A for SCAG, Southern California Associate Governments. What Councilman Allen said about, you know, the fire protection and barriers, so we had a really good meeting and I sent it to the council. Where, and it was talking about L A fire prevention mainly and the Eaton fires and Rolling Hills. And, you know, how much of a buffer zone you need, you know, the three feet, the immediate feet, the thirty feet and on up. Well, this council member in L A had a good question. When we're meeting read-in numbers like we just had last year or last two weeks ago, how are you going to do read-in numbers and try to condense housing? But the state wants us condensed, well, we need to have a buffer zone. So it doesn't make any sense. So somebody's, they're not having lunch together or something. I don't know what's going on. But we do need that buffer zone to prevent the fires because once it hits neighborhoods, then it's up. So hopefully I could get them in here to do a presentation, but they're also, they have, most of the embers come in the little vents and screens, so they have fire protection vents and stuff like that. And, you know, we could have Gary talk about that, but. And then a lot of, unfortunately, like the palm trees that are brought in here, but those are just Roman candles, you know. A lot of the trees that are native to California were here for drought situations, just like we think it's a weed, a flower is a weed, it's actually a native plant. But those are in here for a reason and they can handle the fires and droughts, just like the pine trees. When they do catch on fire, the pine, we all know that their seed goes. So they're trying to implement, bring back native trees, but then we also want big canopies. So there's a lot of work on that. But the big thing is palm trees are a big fire hazard and we all know that. And they also, they also have rat infestation, the rats go up there if you don't cut those prongs off good, so. So they just talked about that, but I thought it was pretty good. Mayor Proten knows the council and that was a really good question. You want us to do condensed housing, but then you want us to have a fire break, so I don't know where to go. So, but hopefully we could talk more about that, especially since summer's coming up. And on that note, please, if your yard and your house, like I said, we're not the H O A, but if you're growing cactails or fox tails up three foot in your front yard and you need help mowing the yard, let me know. I'll bring my lawnmower over because it's really bad and those things will start a fire in your house too. So please make sure you take care of your property. Please don't have storage by the thing, you know, by the, or hazardous waste. So take care of that. And that's all I have. City manager, you have anything?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Councilor Allen, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question for you because I don't know the answer is, you know, the high fire zone maps changed. And we have a fireworks ordinance that restricts fireworks usage in a high fire zone area. And my question is, do those homeowners whose homes are now, have suddenly been included in that area, have they been made aware that they're, and what the fireworks ordinance is now for them, the changes?
Talk to Conrad about that and he's supposed to get the map out on there and make them aware on the thing for the new zone and then give it to the fireworks booth like they always do and pass that out.
Okay.
So we need to discuss it prior to them buying fireworks.
Yeah, the new, the homeowners who are unaware, they need to be made aware somehow, you know.
But he was definitely going to put the fire, because we have a fire map right now for the fireworks. But he's going to implement your, well, Cal Fire's fire map and then we'll get, we'll have a special presentation to let people know, but they also have it at the fireworks booth. But, yeah, we got to let them know.
Right on.
And, yeah, a lot of them probably be like, well, I could, like, last year, well, everything's changed, you know, so. Good point. Okay, Chief, you got anything?
Yeah, we are going to do a presentation on the, on the new fire maps that hit for the L R A on behalf of Cal Fire. That'll probably be sometime in May. Conrad is going to put that on the agenda so that we can discuss that. And we'll discuss all of these things, including the difference between the firewise and the fire safe councils and so forth and what that actually means for the community. So we'll bring all that packaged up with a little bow on it and present it sometime in May.
Okay. And, you know, one of our biggest fires, well, the homes that have been on fire, unfortunately, were the safe and saints and we got to also direct the people, don't throw them in the trash can and put your trash can right by the house. So, you know, keep them out there in the bucket and stuff. I know they're trying to clean up, but that's the big issue there, so.
And to your point, Mayor, it is the property owner's responsibility to make sure that they defend their property to the best of their ability and make their defensible space. And we'll, we'll talk about some of those five, thirty and hundred foot and what that means to, to, to have your property effectively defended against a wildland fire. And I'll put that all in the package as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, it's a shame we had to tell people to do something. I mean, I should just do it for, not only for their sake, but for, you know, common courtesy for their neighbors. Sergeant, you got anything for the sheriff's department?
No, sir.
Everything quiet?
Not really.
I could have used you, though. But no, I want to give kudos to the sheriff's department on my little thing. Three minutes seems like a lifetime when you're fighting somebody, but it's something you got to do. And with this day and age now, you got to protect people and you got to stand up for what's wrong and, you know, make sure you stand up for what's right. You got to, I'm sorry, you got to take care of what's wrong and stand up for what's right. But, yeah, so by the grace of God, there wasn't a shift change or anything else like that or our one sheriff wasn't out on somewhere else. But times have changed and we see it around us and, you know, Grand Terrace, we, we love this place and we still, our biggest thing, and I know on the council, not only take care of our generations that have been here for decades, but take care of our future generations. Because people want to move up here for a big reason because of safety. They want to come up here for families and we just got to do what's right. Like I said, this council's pretty open, probably about to open this council and the whole I E. You know, you're lucky you could talk to any one of us at any given time and we're always responsive to you. You know, we take phone calls, we take emails, we take text messages, we take I O four when we're shopping, but we will, we will not turn you away. We will always talk to you. So we have no hidden agenda on anything of hiding budget money. We don't plan stuff like that. We live here. We want the best for our city. We want the best for our children, our grandchildren, our grandparents, every resident here, not just a select few. We take care of every resident. We might agree to disagree, but when we make, we don't like just making rules and regulations, but we have to to protect you and your investment. Your house is your biggest investment. And when we come up with these ordinances, it's not big, our government taking care of us to make sure that we're whole and your investment is taken care of and you can have a peaceful life in your sanctuary of your home. Not have to worry about a semi going down the street or a semi hitting a kid going down the street. Not worrying about somebody destroying the roads after we, you know, we count every penny to take care of a road. And then next thing you know, they're destroying roads. Not people, you know, robbing other people, taking advantage of other people. You know, illegal fireworks, hopefully one day they'll be gone forever, but I doubt it. But if you see it and you know it's bad and they're lighting them right by the hill, like we say, say some, see something, say something. It's for your own protection because it might be your house catching on fire because you didn't make that simple phone call. Or there could be an innocent child getting hurt because somebody's partying too much and they're not paying attention. And it's, you know, but our sheriffs and our fire departments are going to be working a lot this summer. We appreciate all the hard work you guys do, putting your life on the line for, you know, both your jobs. And like I said, this council is always open and we don't hide anything, so. I'll get off my soapbox on that. We have a closed session, none. Council, you have anything else to add before we close out? So we're going to adjourn, there won't be another council meeting this month because we're going to Sacramento, talk to our assembly members and our senators and a lot of other people to get stuff for our city and outlining cities. And so that's, that's what we do. There's a lot of things under our hat that people don't know about, so we're still every day. So I appreciate the council's input tonight and getting that stuff done. Thank you, Councilman Brown, for bringing up the legislation thing, you know, appreciate that. That was a foresight, you know. But that's why we're all here for, to bring everything together. And I appreciate Scott coming in here and representing the county. One of these days he'll bring us a check. I'm still waiting on it. But, and then Lieutenant Lane's gone. He'll always be known as Lieutenant Lane, you know. It's almost sounds like a Forrest Gump thing. But, you know, a good guy, his heart's in it and he did good for this city and we'll miss him. But you know what? We got Ten Fries moving on and keep going and we have to keep going. So that's the thing about leadership, you make sure the next leaders are ready to take the reins, so. We're going to adjourn the next regular city council meeting will be held May thirteenth at six P M. Any requests to have the item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing submitted to the city clerk. Good night and God bless.